I'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting for April the ninth, two thousand and thirteen to order. I'd like everybody to please stand for our invitation given to us by Father Kent Tarpley of Saint John's Episcopal Church and remain standing for a quick.
Let us pray. Almighty God, you have given us a good country and historic commonwealth and the With County that we can call home. We thank you for this Board of Supervisors and its members, and we pray that you would help them to be good stewards of what has been entrusted into our care. Guide them to be true servants for the common good. May your spirit help them to discern what the best decisions might be for the future welfare of the people of our With County area. Bless their meeting this evening in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Post allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing scheduled for seven oh five, so I'll skip down the agenda, and we'll look at the minutes of March the twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Can I hear a motion?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions and corrections of the minutes of March twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Uh, uh, uh.
And I, thank you. We'll now go to payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, did you give citizens a sign of intention?
Had no one sign up.
Okay.
I should have maybe mentioned that, that no one had signed up, sir.
Thank you.
Payment of the invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pay the invoices.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay the invoice. Anyone have any discussion concerning any invoice in the package? See no discussion, so Mr. Horni?
Uh, uh.
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 And I, thank you very much. Reports, and our first report is from Building and Grounds.
Well, we met and took up the noise ordinance and decided to bring it to the full board, and I guess it'll be on the agenda at a later date. Is that right, Mr. Dalton? Put it on the agenda later.
I thought our intention was not to proceed with the noise ord-
Yeah, that was a recommendation from the board, or from the committee.
It'd be voted on by the full board.
Yep. You want to vote on that now?
Well, I read it, and I understood it. It says, "Your committee of recommendation is not to proceed with the draft ordinance," right?
Right, and that's what the board could-
All right, if we want to vote on that, or does it even take a vote? We're just not proceeding with it. I don't know, I don't believe it takes a vote right now.
Okay.
So we're just doing away with the noise ordinance?
Well, I think we're just not proceeding with it at this time, the way I read it.
If it's a recommendation-
Not proceed with the noise ordinance.
If it's a recommend by the committee, it's got to come-
It's got to come to a vote, doesn't it?
To proceed or not to proceed.
Well, I always thought a motion was for positive action. There's no positive action here.
Well, I agree if we don't do it.
If we don't do it, I mean, there's no positive action. You need a motion to do something. This is a motion not to do anything? I would say that we don't need a motion. But I can do it anyway. I'm easy. Everybody knows that.
I say let's just vote it off. You have your vote. If you vote for this, you're voting to-
To kill it.
All right. So, Mr. Hall?
Well-
I can ask you a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going for the vote. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion is, coming out of committee, is not to proceed with it at this time or not to proceed with it at all?
Not to proceed with it at this time.
Okay. Now, Mr. Hall, and that needs no discussion since it does come from a committee?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a clarification on what it means not to proceed at this time. What does, what does that mean exactly?
Well, I assume it can come back up. I don't really understand why we're voting on it, but-
All right, so... Let me, if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you don't think that it needs a vote, but if it doesn't, I could, I could move that we do go ahead with it?
Well, I've already got a motion from the committee, right now. I can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Yep, but if we, if we take a vote and the vote is in the affirmative, which means the negative, then it's, it's dead.
It's dead for right now.
For a six-month period.
Six-month period.
Okay, I have to say that, I read through the draft, and I think that there are some things that probably need to be changed in the, in the draft, and certainly would not recommend, you know, adopting it tonight as, as written, but, you know, of course, I'm the one who's been, you know, kind of pushing for us to look at this, just simply because there have been people, you know, up in, in the Black Lick area or in the Black Lick District who've complained about noise, about-
Race track.
Well, that's just one, and then, you know, the sawmill and that sort of thing, but again, I'm, yeah, I'm one vote. I would, I would like for us to, you know, to continue to look at it, but that's... That's what I recommend.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak on the matter. The one reason, you know, I don't think this noise ordinance, if we adopt one, is really going to hurt anybody, you know, in the county as far as businesses, industry, or anything like that, you know, but the citizens in the county don't have any recourse whatsoever. If a neighbor wants to pull up in his driveway that's right beside of you, open up his trunk or his doors, turn his radio wide open and play it, there's not a thing you can do about it. He can call, and the sheriff's department can come and ask him to turn it down, but as far as charging him, you know, he can leave and they can turn it right back up. There's no recourse for the citizens of the county in incidents like that. I mean, I don't know how many incidents, you know, I've had a, you know, a couple calls on the racetrack where the same person called me twice, but, you know, I've had three or four calls on citizens, it's just in their community, that the neighbors are just, you know, playing their music real loud, and there's really no recourse for them.
And one other thing that I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, is I understand, you know, personal freedom, and I'm all for that until, you know, personal freedom-
Invades-
Yeah, invade somebody else's.
I'd like to join the discussion a little bit.
Sure.
The hang-up was on what the decimal level you said that, and then you noticed some other language.
Mm-hmm.
Just about every noise generator is exempted in its way it's written. So, I don't know how you set a noise level that will accommodate the racetrack. Do you set a hundred decimals at the property line?
Well, I think in the, in the language that was, was written, and that was another thing that I had questioned about was the time. I think for the racetrack, it was not so much the noise as it is the time, you know, that when, when the time goes past, you know, midnight, and all of a sudden you're into Sunday morning, and they're still, you know, running and everything, that, you know, that is, you know, that is a problem for people. You know, I don't think that anybody is going to complain about the racetrack. I mean, I, I hear it pretty loudly at my house, but, you know, I don't think anybody's going to complain about the racetrack operating during normal hours, but, you know, if it's going to twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning, then that is, you know, that, you know, that is a problem.
And I'll repeat, in the calls that I got on the racetrack, it was the time, it wasn't the noise. It was going past one o'clock in the morning that they felt like that that was excessive, being that late at night.
I need to have a point of clarification on page six of the ordinance under exceptions and for the proposal. It talks about sound generated by commercial and industrial uses in Wood County Progress Park, so that only includes commercial in Progress Park, right? Because, I mean, technically, I don't think Wood Raceway's commercial use, but that's not included.
Well, you know, I agree with, there's things in here that needs to be changed and needs to be clarified, and, you know, waivers, you know, and so forth to be set.
But if we have anybody who, who cannot sit in their own home and enjoy watching TV because of a noise, even if it is, if it is a business, yeah, you know, it seems to me like we should have some way to, you know, to help those citizens out.
What if the sawmill was there first, and then you build a house?
Wasn't.
He knows what he's moving in next to.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
Well, I know, but I'm just giving that as an example.
Right. But, no, yeah, I understand, but in this, you know, in this situation, you know, it wasn't, and I have to say, I've not been over there. Yeah, be glad to go and take a decimal meter, you know, during the height of it, to, you know, to see what it is if we had, if we had a decimal meter, but-
I mean, and that's another thing, is setting decimal meters in the daytime or at night, you know, and things like that, you know, sawmill don't run twenty-four hours a day. Most of them don't, anyway. I don't know of one that does, but, I mean, it's, it has to have some work done to it, but I just don't think we need to just drop it altogether.
I guess the other decision, though, is if we're really not going to pursue it, why invest money and legal work unless we're serious about pursuing it?
Well, I guess that's why we're going to vote on it.
I think it's technically the chair could accept the motion to table, which oversees all other motions, and we just table it for right now.
According to rules procedure, you can make an amendment to table until some further notice and, or set a date, and that takes precedence. You've got to vote on the tabling motion-
Right.
-first, which then makes the first motion mute if the tabling is accepted.
Okay, so I can make a motion to table?
Yes, sir. You can table it, and then-
I would, I would like to make a motion, you know, to, to table this until our second Board of Supervisors meeting in June. That way, and the reason for that motion is so that we can get through the budget process, everything, and still have a little time to, to work on it.
I believe that's June the thirtieth.
Is that the closeout meeting that we'll have?
June the twenty-eighth, excuse me. Last Friday.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to table. All this does now, folks, is that we will discuss this motion again, or this, not motion, but this ordinance, proposed ordinance again at that time, okay? All right, I think we'll have to have a roll call vote on this, Artie.
Uh, uh.
No.
Uh, uh. Five, six, a four, one against. All right, next you have the county office phase two?
Yeah, phase two renovations, committee recommends rejection of-
All bids?
All bids, and that the county rebid it in phases and segments, phase two and segment-
Okay. You heard the motion, and it needs no second. Is there any discussion?
The only thing I would say to that, it also requires the county to act as the general contractor as part of this, and we will also be overseeing the construction and, I guess, finalize or end the contract with Lane Group, with Architects, we'll be doing the contract admin for this.
Okay.
We feel like it'd give us a better chance to stay within budget.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to reject all bids of phase two renovation? We'll start a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Uh.
Uh.
And I, seven, zero. Health Department building?
Yeah, third item is to accept Smith Enterprises' high bid of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for the old Health Department building. We had three bids. That was significantly the high bid.
Okay. Any discussion concerning selling of the former Health Department building? Seeing none, I'll, yes, sir, Mr. Dalton?
As part of that, it would be, I would think it'd be nice to have the permission to the chair and the county administrator signing all documents with the transfer of that building.
Yeah.
Okay. See no other discussion. Mr. Hall?
Uh, uh.
And I, thank you. We will now move back, since it's passed seven oh five, to the public hearing to apply for rural development funding. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing at the Board of Supervisors Meeting Room located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, on April the ninth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven oh five P.M. or there later. The purpose of this meeting is to give notice of the With County Board of Supervisors intent to apply for USDA rural development funds to assist with the development of the following projects. Route fifty-two, Jackson Memorial School Water Line Extension; two, Castleton Road, Route fifty-two to Patterson and Barron Springs Community Water System; number three, Nixon Lane, Wilkins Lane, and Kitchen Road Area Replacement of Existing Water Lines, Ricky Road Area Water Line System, and Slabtown Community Replacement of Existing Water Lines. Comments regarding this economic and environmental impact, service area, and alternatives to the project, and other related project issues are encouraged. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any board members have anything to say?
I would, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As the board knows, we have made application to the Jackson Memorial School Water Line Extension Project through the Virginia Department of Health. In case that funding doesn't come through, this is, will be the backup source. Everybody should know that we've seen numerous correspondence, that they have high sodium levels in the drinking water there, with the sign on the fountains, if you've got high blood pressure or sodium intake problems, even for children, not to drink the water, which will address that problem. The Castleton Road, Route fifty-two to Patterson and Barron Springs Community, it's well documented. I think we've made an application for a grant to serve that Barron Springs area. Mr. McRoberts, Mr. Bear, and Mr. Crisp had a community meeting down there. It was well received. Everybody down there, overwhelming majority, were in favor of that. The Nixon Lane, Wilkins Lane, and Kitchen Road Area are areas that have small diameter water lines, numerous leaks, low water pressures. We've been working on that for several years. Went through two engineers trying to get the P E R done for that. Those people would be very appreciative of that replacement project. Ricky Road Area Water Line System is an area that has multiple homes on it that have bad wells, poor water supplies, that have asked and provided us petition for water. In Slabtown Communities, we've made an application for a grant for that one, but in case we don't have enough money, that would finish out that project if we may have to need to use R D funding. The application we did was a hundred percent grant, but nothing is sure in this world, and they have no fire protection. A large majority of low to moderate income people with small diameter water lines and with minimal pressures. And I think the Water Committee looked at all these for several years, and we've finished the P E Rs and we're ready to move forward with this.
Yeah, I believe this Nixon Lane, Wilkins Lane, I believe Eddie started on that when he was in here, and the Jackson School was the only school in the county that don't have pound of water.
Okay. Do we need any other action on this?
We do not. We have to send a certification to rural development, we'll have the public hearing, and the comments that were received.
Okay. We'll finish up old businesses. Are there any other old business, Mr. Dalton?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move to new business, and the first thing there is an A E P letter talking about rates for the this year and next year, and also power sources. Is this informational?
It is. The two letters, one is a sort of explanation of maybe why they need rate increases, and then the other is a filing for a rate increase. It seems that the rate increase filings happen at a regular basis, or do they just keep piling on top of each other, and it's just harder and harder for a lot of people to pay their electric bills based off these increased rate increases.
That's true. All right, we're going to move to future appointments for Withfield Community College. I think there's some information in your packet of who can be appointed and so forth. I believe we have two people coming off the board who've served two terms, Mr. Larry Corvin and Mr. Buster Houchell. I think all of us know both of those gentlemen, and they have served for eight years. It's my understanding that we have to have this person selected by the July one. They served till June thirtieth. We have had some names that we have discussed before. I think the chair would just like for you to look at this and think about it, and probably have some time in May to give nominations for this position. So, I would like for you to look over the qualifications needed and how they can serve on this board. Does anyone have any questions concerning that? All right, Mr. Dalton, we need to set another work time for the budget?
Yes, sir.
Is that the empty spot there?
I'm waiting on, yes, I know what date we need to take.
Whatever, guys, that you think that we can all get together and do some serious discussions?
Mr. Chairman, what I'm asking is, is it before the nineteenth? I mean, there's a budget work session with no date right above that.
It is.
Okay.
The nineteenth seems-
Well, actually, the nineteenth can move a little bit. The twenty-third, fourteen days from days, the twenty-third, which is your day meeting. This whole thing can slip. I don't know that it's any critical path method this year of getting everything adopted. It's just to make sure it's right. If we slip anywhere around that twenty-third or the twenty-seventh date that week, I think we'll be fine. We can still make the five-fourteenth public hearing date, as long as we get it in the paper.
Can we, can we have a- Talk about having a session maybe after the twenty-third, that afternoon? We do have a day meeting.
That'd be fine.
Gene, would that work all right for you? You got to take most of that day, anyway.
I will probably take the day off from the bus as long as we're done, so I can be back in Speedway. I think it's at five o'clock. Is that what time the B-Dot public meeting is? Do you remember?
It's five to seven?
I think so.
They're having a public hearing that evening for Saint Peter's Road, moving forth, taking public comments for that road project, which goes by Gene's house, I do believe.
Yeah.
Well, it says here also on the twenty-third, let's see, that we were to complete review of the budget and set tax levy. You say we can move that date back. What's the latest date we can move that to?
I think... Look at this calendar here.
Where's the B-Dot meeting going to be held at, Gene?
The Speedway, I'm interested.
Well, if we slip the public hearing a week, May the twenty-first, and any time before May the second would be okay, I think. Every week you slip, it slips the public hearing date.
Okay. Well, if it's all right with the board members, Artie, how about you, that whole day?
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third. We're here anyway in the morning. We just finish up that afternoon, and hopefully we finish by five o'clock.
What time is starting?
Well, we're going to have a board meeting in the morning.
So, start at one o'clock.
And we'll, hopefully, we'll work on having the agenda streamlined a little bit, if we can.
It's like twenty-
Twenty-third at one P.M.? Huh? One P.M. We'll set it for one P.M. We may run a little late, but hopefully we won't. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the Tourism Strategic Plan. It says here to refer this to the Economic Development Committee, I assume, by cause of their budget. I just-
From the last time this is a rewrite, hopefully- From the last time this is a rewrite, hopefully a lot of the negativity that was in the original's been taken out of. I think it's easier to work on it than a committee than it is in the full board. We sat through, we listened to it, made our comments. I think the Economic Development Committee can work on it next week, I believe, or whenever our next meeting is.
All right, that sounds good to me. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, you have on your desk an agreement between Commonwealth of Virginia, Department of Health, and With County. It's our annual contribution of local funds, the agreement we sign every year. I will present that to you for authorization to sign it.
This effectively locks us into this amount?
That's last year's, the current year's budget.
Oh, okay, so this is not...
We've paid three, four, seven already.
Okay. I thought that it was for next year.
No, it's fiscal year 13.
Okay.
If we don't pay, don't, we need not to cut a check next time. But this is the budgeted amount. Actually, we budgeted $341,000 last year initially. Then we dropped it back to 343 because they couldn't get it into the building when we originally thought they would.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I might...
So what kind of motion do we need? I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the county administrator to sign this agreement.
With the Department of Health?
Yes.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for the vote, Mr. Horne.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any other business other than that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up something that we had at the Euro Valley Regional Jail Budget Meeting last Friday. I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mr. Dalton. I left the two budgets that they presented to us, the ones on the board that were there. They're looking at going to contract their medical services out. They're short about six or seven nurses right now. To pay for this, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward to the board and kind of get the board's feeling on it, is the state responsible inmates down there, they used to charge per diem for them, didn't they? Several, I don't know how long ago.
At one time they did, and then somehow they started charging the locales for them. They're really not our responsibility.
But they're, to make up the, I think it's, they're counting, you know, the hiring of six nurses would be $350,000, and the healthcare plan is 789,509, which would make a difference of 3,439,509. What they're going to propose is to charge per diem for state responsible inmates roughly around eight or nine dollars a day to pay for it. I think that's what they're going to propose, and I would like to just get some feelings of the board, what they thought about it.
So what I gather is that they can't take care of them now with the staff?
Well, no. They're having problems with their, with the contract doctor, I think. And they're having, they're having issues with getting qualified nurses to come in, and they're about six short. And they're talking, you know, that they're afraid they're going to get sued, you know? And I thought there was a limit on how much. I don't know if there are, but I thought there's a limit on how much they could sue the jail. They may not be. But they're, they're just thinking that just one lawsuit would, you know, it could wipe this out with just one case. And, you know, by going to contract healthcare, all the liability transfers to them.
But every lawsuit, we've got liability insurance, or the jail has liability insurance that limits the output. Every case that's sued is 5,000 bucks. You know? I did look at those two budgets Friday when they appeared on my desk. It appeared to me that their health insurance has gone way up, and they pay not only the employee share, but part of the family plan. And I guess my question of that is, there's only one other locale in the jail that pays that, and they haven't made any movement of asking the employee to pay any portion of that or get their health insurance in line with what all the members are. But the healthcare issue is a big issue there. I know that. Is Dr. Moses still their attending physician who never shows up and collects his $125,000? Whatever we paying him?
Whatever. They just, you know, they just have issues with them. And they say this will save them money as far as they'll be doing a lot more stuff in-house instead of sending them to the hospital for stuff. You know, like if one come in last week that was a real bad diabetic, they didn't have but one nurse, she was tied up somewhere else. I don't know exactly what happened, but his sugar ended up over 500 or 600. They'd take him to the emergency room. They'd had another nurse there when they had intakes to check them out. They probably wouldn't have had that bill at the hospital, but, and I, you know, I'm just telling you what, you know, things that was discussed, you know, at the meeting, that they would be doing more stuff in-house, you know, like somebody is dehydrated or something, they needed IVs, which they don't do that there now. But this new company would be doing stuff like that in-house instead of sending them to the hospital.
They got a, so they're going to open back the infirmary and put beds in, or?
We didn't get that far in discussing.
You know, what we did last time, or it was contracted out before, and the reason it is where it is today is because the cost on the contract out basis became so high that they couldn't afford to keep it the way it was. And then they had the great idea of hiring the attending physician who could do all that, who never shows up, as a matter of fact. But, you know, and at one time we had a contract with Carillion, and we actually took the prisoners to the Carillion Hospital, but then we had to keep a guard with them. It's doubled up the cost. I always liked the idea of when they got really sick, is go to the judge and ask them to be released.
I guess some you could, some you couldn't.
So what's our, I don't know, I can't, what's our alternatives here?
Well, there's, you know, to either go with hiring, contracting out the healthcare or not, keeping it in-house and just hiring more staff.
Money-wise, about equal, is it a wash?
Well, no. Money-wise, they said, you know, the hiring, I think they was talking about six nurses, was $350. The difference in the two is $439,509. That's the difference in going to contract and hiring more nurses. So the, the contract for the, and I can't think of the name of the Medico, I think is the place that give the lowest bid, was 789,509. That's what it would be a year. And it's roughly 439,509 difference in the two costs.
Can you find the nurses?
That I don't know. It's, working in a prison environment, you know, and I've had a lot of experience, it's hard for nurses to deal with. I mean, some can, some, you know, don't pay any attention to, and some, they just, they just can't work in that kind of environment.
I can understand that.
So are they asking for our approval, or?
Well, I'm kind of asking you, you know, I'll be the one voting.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kind of asking for what y'all think about it. That's kind of what I'm asking. What does the board feel? And I know it's hard. I'm not, you know, doing too good of a job explaining to it, explaining all the ins and outs of it.
When will the vote come up for this, Mr. Chairman?
We have a meeting Friday. I don't know where it will come up then, or at the next month's meeting.
What was the Budget Committee's recommendation?
The Budget Committee, I think, will recommend it. Well, Gerald is going to recommend it. As far as, I don't think we really got a recommendation from the Budget Committee. One thing I asked is how many inmates is With County has down there? It's, you know, state responsible. I just want to know how much, you know, we were going to have to pay for this. You know, With County and Pulaski County, you know, has the brunt of the load anyway. Carroll County has, is the next down the list, but Pulaski and With County has, they pay more than any of the other counties.
Is there any intention of moving any of those brunt or something?
Well, I mean, they'll probably lose, I'm saying, maybe 100 or less, because you got to take them from the whole state. The more, the most, the worst thing, well, the thing that the jail's worried about the most is losing officers, because there's several that live in Grayson County and Gal Lakes that will probably transfer, transfer, or well, not transfer, just put in applications for jobs there. And the impact of that would be, if they done that, they would take, until they got new officers hired and trained, they would have to bring the transportation officers back into the, to the jail for a time being, for temporary. And I guess we'd have to transport then.
Well, this is what I would say, is that we had basically the same number of inmates before we did the expansion as we do now. We had 100 less guards. We did the transport then. We double booked them. And my question, this would be my question back to the pointies of the jail, if we did it then, now why all of a sudden are we looking that we can't do it under the new circumstances? I mean, it's just like the salary scale there. Five years ago, or six years ago, or whenever it was, we provided raises because and subsidized the existing employees. We've hired 150 people and brought them in at the new scale instead of what the entry level scale was supposed to be. I mean, that's what the superintendent's supposed to be doing, is trying to figure out how to save money, not to spend money. And I'd say that to Gerald if he was standing here.
I agree with you. You know, that's, you know...
It'd be pretty hard for us to say, we're going to make you pay 5% of your healthcare, and then we go down there and pay 100% of theirs. And that, and they have a better policy than we've got. I mean, it's a higher level. Plus, you pick up the employees' family portion down there. I've heard that argument for morale and everything else, but it is a business.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll just, when we go back and have the meeting this Friday, I'll just keep y'all up to date on what's happening.
I'm sorry, I didn't think we'd be getting much...
This is what the impact is. If it passes that, if it's 469,000, you pay 43% of that, that's $170,000 more in your budget.
That gives you some insight.
Tim, Friday, would you mention to them that if the military downsizes, can they use corpsmen and medics that have been trained by the military? Or are they thinking registered nurses only?
I think some of the positions has to be registered nurses for the medicine they're given.
Well, there probably has to be one on each ship, but if you see what goes on at some of these clinics, everybody don't have to be a registered nurse. In fact, I think if a doctor goes by on the interstate and thinks about it, I pray. That's the biggest bill that bothers me every month in looking at the bills, is what we pay for that regional jail. The numbers that you're talking about going up, it would seem like to me that the jail would do everything they could to go the best route instead of the most convenient route. That's why that's called a job for Gerald. In other words, I question, if you can sub it out to a contractor, they're in business to make money. So if they can do it and make money, why can't the jail do it efficiently?
Anybody else?
I don't know, it's a tough job up there. I'll add that when I finish. But always, as everybody knows, when you're doing a budget, it's tough. It always affects people. But, you know, it's just a matter of across the board being fair to everybody that we deal with. I mean, that's, that's how I've always looked at it. If we're not going to offer With County people something, I'm probably not going to advocate to provide something to somebody else. But then you got 17, 16...